...portion of the meeting is closed and we're gonna move on to item number fourteen. This is the overview of requests and recommendations by the Director of Planning and Development for his designated. We have a public hearing, this is relative to following rezoning request recommended for approval and founding compliance with the comprehensive plan on the planning board. Request was by Don H. Williams, Louis advertised in the rezoned eight point three nine acres located at ten fifty Country Club from R six MFA to OICU to O and I. At this time, I'd like to call on a planning director just to give us an overview.
Good evening Mayor, members of council, city manager, and my fellow city staff and the esteemed citizens of Rocky Mountain. The assessment of fair housing is a general plan looking at specific policies related to fair housing and what the city has been able to do to affirmatively further fair housing. The plan sets forth priorities for the consolidate plan so that the assessment of fair housing is the basis for the consolidated plan, the annual action plan, and will be assessed by the caper. The assessment of fair housing was on display from November ninth to December ninth. We received some written comments to the plan from the steering committee of the Community Development Academy, or, excuse me, the Community Academy. The written comments were submitted on December seventh. These comments were received within the public display period and will be included in the appendix of the final adopted assessment of fair housing. The major issues that the Community Academy had with the assessment of fair housing include that the Community Academy believed that the city should adopt policies to mitigate the impact of neighborhood gentrification in year one. Although the plan didn't have any specific policies related to mitigating the impact of neighborhood gentrification in year one, the plan did include a broad policy that addressed residential displacement as a whole. This included continuing to provide home and CDB assistance for housing rehabilitation and new construction, facilitation of contractor workshops, projects that improve fair housing choice and access to opportunities for members of protected classes, supporting low-income housing tax credit developments, and supportive housing in higher opportunity areas. The written comments to the assessment of fair housing also included a concern about meaningful citizen participation. The, I would like to note that the process for citizen participation included a significant increase for citizen participation from past years, including several rounds of stakeholder interviews. Those were held in February in relation to the analysis of impediments, which was a draft document that was very similar to the assessment of fair housing. So, we've been working on an analysis of impediments, although with some changes to our procedures, an assessment of fair housing was triggered instead of an analysis of impediments. Fortunately, the format for the analysis of impediments was very similar to the assessment of fair housing, so all of the stakeholder interviews related to the analysis of impediments were able to be counted towards the assessment of fair housing. So again, we held several stakeholder interviews in the month of February, and again, we held an additional stakeholder interview on November eighth with members of the Latino Outreach Committee. The reason for this targeted stakeholder group was we felt that representation from, representatives from, with limited English proficiency wasn't broad enough during the February stakeholder meetings, so we reached out again to make sure that we targeted those groups specifically. We also held three public meetings in February, one here at City Hall, one in Tarboro at the Edgcombe County Municipal Building, and as well as in Nashville. These meetings were advertised in both English and Spanish, in the Telegram, the Nashville Graphic, the Tar River Times, on the city's website, through flyers, and email invitations. In addition to the meetings in February, we also held meetings in November at the Down East Partnership for Children in a neighborhood that's considered a racial and ethnic concentrated area of poverty. Again, we advertised this meeting in the newspaper, via flyer distribution, the city website, and direct outreach to community and neighborhood leaders. The city also just made an online survey. Again, this was a method for outreach that hadn't been used in prior years. Although the, there was only eleven respondents to the survey, the survey results are included in the appendix of the AFH, and six of the eleven did regard themselves as representatives of stakeholder organizations. The city also, of course, participated in the required public display period. The AI was on display for more than thirty days, thirty days is the minimum requirement by HUD. It was on display from March twenty eighth through July thirty first. When the document changed from the AI to AFH, which included a lot of similar elements, the document was put back on display from November ninth to December ninth. Public display period was advertised in the Rocky Mountain Telegram as well as on the city website. In addition to the outreach strategies and participation tools described just a few minutes ago, the city will research the potential for an email notification that citizens can opt into. Subscribers of that email subscription will be notified anytime there are changes to the Community Development Website. This is where all public notices are added, so anytime a notice is posted, the citizen will become aware. The letter also addressed considering forming a workforce housing advisory council. The city staff will, did consider this recommendation for a workforce advisory council. The specific terminology was that council would direct staff to work with representatives of the underserved communities on a recommendation for a workforce housing advisory group. City staff will do that, it will be included in the assessment of fair housing. There was also concern for timeframe about the achievement of community revitalization strategies. The plan had articulated a three-year timeframe. The Community Academy wanted an accelerated timeframe for that, and the city will adopt a two-year action rather than a three-year action, although staff felt it was not possible to implement this in a one-year timeframe because they want to give consideration to the many policies out there. And, you know, as there are several community revitalization strategies to perform a cost-benefit analysis for, we were able to determine that this could be done in two years rather than in three. So that is a change that will be made to the assessment of fair housing. In addition to working with the local Latino Outreach Committee, the city will also add working with leaders of the local Hispanic community on identifying locations and publications to disseminate information about community development programs, fair housing, tenant rights, and affordable housing options to reach people with limited English proficiency as a year-one action. And the city will consider, or, excuse me, will make updates to the city's Language Access Plan. The city will do this, the Language Access Plan in years past has been a three-year plan, so it makes sense that the Language Access Plan will be updated to coincide with the new consolidated plan, which will also be a three-year document. We thank the Community Academy for their comments, which I've summarized just a few months ago, and look forward to hearing more, which will be submitted as a part of the assessment of fair housing.
Any questions for Kellyanne before she sits down from the council? Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, I'm gonna call your name, come forward, and again, this is to speak on the fair housing that we're talking about now in the report, and so, this time, I'll call your name, come forward, and again, kind of limit your remarks to three minutes. Susan Perry Cole.
Good evening. My name is Susan Perry Cole, I live at two fifty-one Rose Street here in the city. My affiliations are with the Down East Community Neighborhood Association, and also the Steering Committee of the Community Academy. I want to express my congratulations to those of you who was sworn in today, and those of you who took our new offices, congratulations. I want to begin by saying that we should all recognize that the city has entered a new phase of economic development and revitalization, and much of that is due to the leadership and vision of this group, the city council in front of me, and you should be congratulated. However, this new phase will require new tools and programs and strategies for really the uplift of undeserved neighborhoods in our city. I would like to also commend the city staff and the city for the progress that we do see in the assessment of fair housing for 2017. If you compare this document with the document done in 2012, we see that there's an expansion of the kinds of programs and tools and strategy that are included in the plan, and you and your staff should be congratulated for that. However, I want to stick with the recommendations we came to make because I want to know what you're gonna do. I heard what Kellyanne said, but I want to know what the, how the council's gonna react to this. One of our recommendations was to move an item that appears on page ten of the assessment of fair housing to the first year. I heard Kellyanne, and I appreciated Kellyanne, that you responded to the written comments, but we still want to put it in year one. All this item does is, it says here under year three, "The city of Rocky Mountain should conduct a cost-benefit analysis of the following community revitalization strategies and share the conclusions with the public." Now, those of us that live in these neighborhoods, and I live two blocks from the event center, we recognize the time is now to begin to assemble a toolbox to deal with the changes that are imminent. There are going to be changes to our neighborhoods, and some can be good and some can be bad, but we're particularly concerned about gentrification. We know that you want to attract new young families to the city, and we want to do that as well, but we want to see this item moved to year one. And then the final thing I want to mention is the workforce housing advisory council. We in these neighborhoods need a leadership role in the changes that are going to occur in our neighborhoods, and we'd like you to create that workforce housing advisory council. Thank you very much for listening.
Hello. My name is Robert Davis, I live at eighteen twelve Lane Avenue, Meadow Brook Community here in the city of Rocky Mountain. The president of that community association. I am also the chair of the Community Academy. And I have pledged an effort to work with the city in any capacity that I can to help improve, not only my neighborhood, but all the underserved neighborhoods. I've asked the people of my community, when they come to ask the city something, to bring their hands open and be willing to work in assist, not just wait for someone to do something. But I'm at that point now that it's the show-me time. Now, we don't have to play rocket scientists to understand how we got where we're at. You know, these things don't happen by accident. And what we're saying now, that we know that what we've done in the past to make this one city, one community, for the benefit of everybody, has not worked. If you continue to do the same thing, you get the same results. So it's time to make a change. And that's why this workforce group is great. You know, you can leave from here, but you don't know what's happening in my community neither. And if you think you can make plans for improvement, sustain improvement in my community without our input, I think we need to look at if you are really qualified to take that task on, because you can't. We've seen in the past it hasn't worked. And all we're saying is, let us partner with you. We don't mean to tell you what to do, we just want to show you a different vision. We know, the more that you can see, the more that you can understand. Thank you.
Alicia Ashen.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. There is beauty in our city, we see it every day, and we are so thankful for the things that you have done and the things that you will do in our city. I am here on behalf of SERCO. It is a community in the southeast part of Rocky Mountain. For those who are not familiar, that's like the Old Hill Section, Planner Street, Brett Street, that area. We who live in undeserved neighborhoods understand the need for economic development strategies to revitalize the city of Rocky Mountain. However, we also understand that to mitigate these impending threats of gentrification and the displacement of already marginalized residents, the city of Rocky Mountain needs to implement intentional and meaningful strategies to promote affordable development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Warren.
Good evening. My name is Mary Warren, I live at three eighteen Allen Avenue. I have been in the community for forty years, and I too would like to see the plan moved from three to four years. Two years sound weird, but in our community, we need to change now. To think two to three years, there are so many changes happening, I mean, we can't wait. I'm asking the council to take a look at creating a plan that will work for us now, because two to three years from now, it's too late. The time for the change is to happen now in the community. There are so many changes going on in Rocky Mountain, the community is motivated, and we, as like Mr. Davis said, when you sit where you sit and you live where I live, I live on what we call tombstone territory, and I see our people are motivated, they are ready for a change, and to put us off for another two to three years, we might lose that momentum. We need, we are asking to look at starting that plan now, not two to three years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Charles Chambers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Congratulations to those of you who have renewed your commitment to the city, and I just want to make a couple of comments related to what we're talking about regarding the assessment and the overall plan. First, I think that the idea of sort of front-loading this to the first year is for a very significant reason. Typically, when you're about to do big projects like event centers, major development in the city, one of the things you immediately know that you have to look out for is gentrification, and you have to look at what the impact of major projects in close proximity to residential areas will have. So essentially, we're already a couple or three years behind where the city should be in regard to addressing the issues that we're raising. That should be done contemporaneous with the planning for a number of the projects that we talk about all the time. So, affordable housing, fair housing goes sort of hand in hand. Fortunately, my background has been much more involved in fair housing issues, but they are raised certainly by some of the things, some of the issues that you see addressed in terms of affordable housing. So I just think that the city, the city council, really needs to make this a priority. Talk about fair housing and affordable housing like we talk about the other projects. It's that important, how we impact the neighborhoods and how our citizens are impacted. And we do need, I want to address one other thing. I'm very impressed with the speakers who preceded me, so I can change everything I had to say, but this is, this is the second or third time I've heard discussions by city employees about notice and how notice is given to the citizens. And I think that's something else that really does need to be addressed. I haven't talked about in the context, as a matter of fact, most of the work I've been doing has been with communities and not coming here to talk to you guys about these things, but whether it's in transportation, housing, or others, there is a need, when you say notice, that you're giving notice to the community, that we take care of this digital age that we live in. I mean, I heard the mention that we're gonna start, but I've also been at meetings with HUD where questions about notice were raised by citizens, and I think that's something that we really should address. And I'll, there's another burning issue, but I'll bring it another time. Thank you.
Canadians Cooper. You okay? Yes, sir. Darling Spencer Harris.
Good evening. My name is Donald Spencer hyphen Harris. I reside at five thirty-seven Orange Street in the southeast Rocky Mountain District. I'm a member of the SERCO, which is the southeast Rocky Mountain, and I come here before you today because I want you as the council to listen and be observant as to the things that our community needs and that they should have probably had years ago, especially with the event center now coming into play. We, again, like other speakers have already said, we do not want gentrification to come in here and affect our community where we have worked hard for, especially us homeowners have worked hard for on our properties and our communities, and we do not want that to go to waste. Again, we want that docket to be perhaps reviewed and moved to that first year, not pushed it off to that third year, because the things that we're asking should have been done yesterday, not three and four years from now. So, we that live in these underproven, undeserved neighborhoods, we understand the structural inequities that plague the twin counties. You got Nash County, you got Edgcombe County. I happen to reside on the Edgcombe County side, but I don't feel that I'm on the poor side, but I'm treated as though I'm on the poor side. And we're, and the problems that are going on in the communities, they weren't created overnight, and it's going to take time to remedy. However, there is still a responsibility, you as the council, you as the city of Rocky Mountain, to do these things and take proactive steps to make these things happen so we don't have all these inequities. And we're gonna hold you accountable for them. And we need a plan that's gonna work now, not next year, and not the year after. We need a plan now. Thank you.
Mr. Turner, by the way, you look very nice tonight.
Preaching clothes.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's Turner, one of the gates I watched it. It took several minutes and two neighbors to get my butt spucked. And I told him I don't come to see the council dressed up, I come in my work clothes. My reasoning is I might have to preach, and then I might have to get profane. So I said, if I put on a tie, they may not lock me up. What has been said and presented is pretty much what I had to say. I like to be rare so I don't have to repeat stuff. The things that have been said, the thing that got put back to the third year, we're gonna start that tomorrow. We'll go without you. Okay? If you're not there, we'll let you know what we did. About two years ago, I was made aware of this affordable house, fair and affordable housing. I forgot some of it, I wanted to review it, but... about notice and how notice is given to the citizens. And I think that's something else that, that really does need to be addressed. Um, I, I haven't talked about in the context, as a matter of fact, most of the work I've been doing has been with communities and not, uh, coming here to talk to you guys about these things, but, uh, whether it's in transportation, housing, or, or others, uh, there is a need, when you say notice, that you're giving notice to the community, that we take care of this digital age that we live in. Uh, and I heard the mention that we're gonna start, but I've also been, uh, meetings with HUD where questions about notice were raised by citizens, and I think that's something that we really should address. Uh, and I'll, there's another burning issue, but I'll bring it another time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Cornelius Cooper.
I, I'm gonna have to refer to the secretary of service.
You okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Darlene Spencer-Harris.
Good evening. My name is Donald Spencer hyphen Harris. I reside at five thirty-seven Orange Street in the southeast Rocky Mountain District. I'm a member of the SERCO, which is the southeast Rocky Mountain. And I come here before you today because I want you as the council to listen and be observant as to the things that our community needs and that sh- they should have probably had years ago, especially with the event center now coming into play. We, again, like other speakers have already said, we do not want gentrification to come in here and affect our community where we have worked hard for, especially us homeowners have worked hard for, on our properties and our communities, and we do not want that to go to waste. Again, um, we want that docket to be perhaps reviewed and moved to that first year, not pushed it off to that third year, because the things that we're asking should have been done yesterday, not three and four years from now. So, we that live in these under-provability, undeserved neighborhoods, we understand the structural inequities that plague the twin counties. You got Nash County, you got Edgcombe County. I happen to reside on the Edgcombe County side, but I don't feel that I'm on the poor side, but I'm treated as though I'm on the poor side. And we're, and the problems that are going on in the communities, they weren't created overnight, and it's gonna take time to remedy. However, there is still a responsibility, you as the council, you as the city of Rocky Mountain, to do these things and take proactive steps to make these things happen so we don't have all these inequities. And we're gonna hold you accountable for them. And we need a plan that's gonna work now, not next year, and not the year after. We need a plan now. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Turner, by the way, you look very nice tonight.
Preaching clothes. Oh, yeah.
Lewis Turner, one of the gates I watched it. Uh, it took several minutes and two neighbors to get my butt spucked. And I told them I don't come to see the council dressed up. I come in my work clothes. My reasoning is, uh, I might have to preach, and then I might have to get profane. So I said, if I put on a tie, they may not lock me up. Uh, what has been said and presented is pretty much what I had to say. I like to be rare so I don't have to repeat stuff. The things that have been said, the thing that got put back to the third year, we're gonna start that tomorrow. We'll go without you. Okay? If you're not there, we'll let you know what we did. About two years ago, I was made aware of this affordable house, fair and affordable housing. I forgot some of it, I wanted to review it, but I understand that, uh, there's some sanction in this new law that would hold people accountable, because if you don't use the money right, it's sanctioned to get it back and maybe imprison some of them. And that maybe will, and, and over the last thirty, thirty-five years I've been here, I can remember some yeses, where we went to, uh, Washington and called people up there and got some little stuff done in Rocky Mountain. Uh, I, uh, Mr. Grant, Peter Grant, he's deceased. But he tore down one of his sheds, he, he, he worked on cars and, and... And, uh, okay, we'll stop this. When we have issues that need attention, I'm offended when you tell me I got so many minutes, so many seconds. We gonna, we gonna change that. Now, now, when we have community to hold, people, strangers come in and talk two hours, and I got three minutes, I'm offended. I'm offended, we gonna change that too. I understand this when we signed up, because I was here when what, what happened about three months ago, and I was embarrassed. But courtesy to the citizens, we let you, and we expect you to listen to us.
But, Mr. Turner, I'm gonna stop because we're gonna get unfair to you, just like we're fair to everybody else, and limit your remarks because we didn't let everybody else pretend to go on.
Well, I, I'm gonna sit down, I'm gonna sit down, but I, uh, I'm not gonna be restricted to a certain sentence after this.
That, those are the only sign-up sheets that I had, um, so at this point in time, um, we're gonna close the public hearing portion. Uh, the recommendation is to receive the public comment, approve the plan, and authorize admission of the plan by staff. Um, that, those are the recommendations, so we entertain a motion or a council want to make any comments. I'm glad for them to do that now.
Thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I'd like to, uh, thank the staff for working hard to reflect the needs and the interest of our community, um, in this, in this fair housing plan. I also am super impressed tonight with the outpouring, um, throughout this community for folks that, um, I've worked with for twenty-five years, senior work. Everything you said is absolutely the truth as far as how we work hard to hold our neighborhoods, our communities down. We have a...